Public. Then there'll be two formally warned public hearings held by the Planning Commission. And subsequent to that, you will arrive at a draft that is called the Planning Commission Approved Draft of the Warren Land Use Regulations. And then you'll further, you'll forward that to the Select Board, who then will hold their own public hearing and may also hold an informal information meeting prior to.
Right. So what we're trying to do is make this pretty easy and pretty relaxed and get people to be able to put their comments in so that everybody has a chance to give their opinions and, and talk about specific areas which, you know, when our first cut at this, we've, we've, we've made some changes here and we get, we're anxious to get people's comments on that at this point. And we will accept comments right through all the public meetings as well. So what this is, is, um, this is a, um, the beginning of our land use development regulations, uh, public outreach. And tonight I believe we're going to discuss the rural residential and the conservation districts. The last time we did the, uh, the Warren Village and Sugar Bush Resort ones. And, um, the idea is to give you a broad overview here. Um, the, the, uh, the land use development regulations are, uh, being written to support the, to the town plan, which we wrote a couple of years ago and, um, is sort of the more broad brush goals and objectives to try and, um, uh, put forth a vision of development in the town of Warren. And that plan was unanimously accepted a couple of years ago. The way these regulations are written are in support of those goals and, and objectives. And we've tried to make it a little more enforceable, a little more clear and a little more, um, available to the, uh, development, to the Development Review Board that has to actually, um, make decisions based on these. So we've been working on it for a long time. I, there are definitely some flaws in it and, um, there are definitely places where we could use public input. And that's the, that's the reason for these informational meetings. And we're hoping that you feel free to make comments, especially when they're related to your land, but to keep in mind the greater Warren area. Um, we're trying to increase the, we're trying to take into consideration the values, property and otherwise of the people in town when we're doing this. So, um, take, take a look at the whole thing, not just your property, but the overall concept, please. No, um, I leave it over to, uh, we, we have PlaceSense, which, uh, is represented by both Brandy and Rod here tonight, and they have been our consultants, not only on the town plan, but on the land use development regulations. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to them.
Do you want to do Planning Commission introductions as well?
Oh, okay, we can do that. Um, uh, my name is Jim Sanford. I'm the current Chairman of the Planning Commission. Camilla Bain is on the Planning Commission, also on the Select Board. Randy Graves is on the Planning Commission. Mike Ketchel is on the Planning Commission. Jennifer Falese is on the Planning Commission. Um, let's see, uh, Mike Bridgewater is on the Planning Commission. He's under the name of Helen here and because he's using his wife's connection. And Dan Raddick is also on the Planning Commission. So that's it for us. And, um, you know, please, uh, you know, listen to what these guys have to say. If you have any comments, you can, I, I think what we decided the best way to do it was through the chat room.
Yeah, we'll go over, yep, we'll go over that, Jim.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Okay, so.
And Ruth Robbins, excuse me, Ruth Robbins is the, is the zoning administrator in the town of Warren. Probably the most important person on this whole crowd. You, she's the one you're gonna have to deal with. Okay, you did something here.
Yes. Okay, so fully folks are seeing the screen. Um, as Jim said, we're going to walk through a very short overview presentation. Um, we're encouraging people who have questions or comments to use the chat box to type those in, um, which you, if you're not familiar with the Zoom interface, um, if you put your cursor down towards the bottom of the screen, you generally will see the bar that has various things in it, including a button that says chat. Um, if you click on that, you can type in a message. Uh, if you type in your message, we get a transcript of that and it will help ensure that, um, questions and comments get recorded and responded to. Uh, we're gonna have some ability to do back and forth in this format, but, um, for those of you who have a very, sort of property specific question, we may, uh, need to deal with those by responding to them after the meeting. Um, and then just in terms of good Zoom etiquette, in case the, you haven't caught up on that over the past year, um, if you're not speaking, if you could stay muted, um, that's helpful. Um, if you are having problems with the chat box, um, and, uh, you want to, to speak, if you can raise your hand, um, virtually, using the little hand raise component, um, under participants, that is a way to get our attention. Um, and if you are typing in a question or comment that's related to a specific property, if you include the address, that will be helpful to us as well for, um, responding back.
Okay, so, um, this is just a very, uh, general statement to sort of frame, um, the purpose of the rewriting of the land use, uh, regulations or the zoning regulations as they're often referred to as. Um, as Jim pointed out, um, the town plan, which was adopted recently, laid out, if you like, the ground rules or the, the broad brushstrokes for, um, rewriting the regulations and made clear that one of the town's priorities was in fact to produce new land use regulations. And so that's most of the reason why we're all here. Uh, then another issue is that, um, over time, as you might imagine, um, state and federal law changes and in the instance of Warren, uh, that, that's significant due to the nature of land use, uh, in Warren, including the resort. And so this is an opportunity for the community to work through all those changes in, uh, regulation and make sure that the local regulations reflect the current state of play. I should say somewhat with an asterisk here, it's very difficult to stay up to date and it's entirely possible that within six months of adopting the new regulations, there'll be some minor deviation and that's just the way it goes, but it doesn't mean that you shouldn't make a good faith effort every now and again to get up to date, which is what this is, uh, what this project is, uh, attempting to do. And then, um, land use regulations are really a process, they're really processed documents. And so what we are hoping to do by, um, working on new regulations is to improve the level of certainty and clarity for, for applicants, um, you know, particularly even before they choose to, um, pursue a development project, the zoning administrator, whose job it is, um, to enforce the land use regulations and the Development Review Board, uh, the acronym DRB, uh, whose job it is to, um, make decisions about, uh, land use regulations, uh, in, in Warren. So, uh, that's the general background for the reason why we're doing what we're doing. The next set of remarks are just sort of framing the scope of, the scope of the work that we've done and, and the intentions of the Planning Commission. So, um, the first big statement right there at the top is, it's not a wholesale change. It's much more of a refinement and a development of themes and issues that have been, um, well known in the Warren community and the broader community of Vermont for some time. So it's not a complete, um, trashing of the old regulations and instituting new regulations. Many of the procedures, many of the attributes are, are the same or only very lightly modified. Uh, the underlying policies are the same. That is to guide growth and development towards the village and resort areas and in so doing, attempt to conserve natural resources and to protect the rural character elsewhere in town. So in other words, really try and, uh, pursue a set of policies that will preserve the landscape pretty much as you know it now. Uh, changes in approach and the organization of the regulations. Here, what we're looking for is how to make the regulations really effective at implementing the town plan's goals. And then lastly, address recognized mismatches between the existing development patterns, um, and goals and current regulations. So what we're looking for here is, um, mostly focused on the resort and rural areas of town. Um, the village, uh, that's been, that was worked on in the last revision to the land use regulations, remains largely unchanged. And that's because that last set of changes, um, focused on the village and the community appears to be pretty comfortable with the way that pattern is, um, playing out and don't see that as an area where there needs to be serious change.
Okay. So there is a, a new zoning district map being proposed. Um, so that is, you know, looks like a, a large comprehensive change and in some ways it is and in other ways it's as Rod was describing it, sort of a refinement and continuation of prior, um, policies and, and zoning districts. Um, so in looking at the district boundaries, one of the, the Planning Commission really stepped back and as, um, guided by the town plan, reviewed all the zoning districts and boundaries, um, trying to, to reflect what's in the town plan and the capability and suitability of the land for the types of uses and the development, um, that would be allowed on it by the regulations. Um, a lot of this was to acknowledge the existing pattern of land development and of land conservation. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about that, um, particularly in regards to the conservation, proposed conservation district, um, this evening. And then generally the boundaries are trying to follow parcels, uh, boundaries or other easily recognizable boundaries, um, and to minimize the number of parcels divided by the zoning district boundary. There still remain some, but, um, Warren's current map has quite a few because there's, um, districts that are defined by elevation. And so those cut through a lot of, of parcels. So we have reduced that so more people should find that their land is just in one zoning district and not in two than existed before. So this is what that change looks like. The map, the adopted map on the left is, um, what, what's in place now and the proposed map on the right, um, is what we'll be talking about, um, this evening. You can see the basic, um, concepts and in sort of broad shapes of this map are, are not dissimilar. The idea of the, the upper elevations along the east and west sides of town and in the darker green colors, the focal points of the village and the resort, um, a lot of that remains, the, the small, little commercial areas like at the bottom though and the airport. Um, so a continuation of, of patterns, um, and districts that existed, but, um, some refining and modification that we'll be talking about, uh, this evening.
Okay, so in our earlier meeting, we focused on, um, the resort and, uh, the business districts. And tonight, um, we're gonna focus our attention on the residential and rural districts and the conservation district. But, um, I should say that if you're in the audience and you've got a question about a topic that was, or, or, or a zoning district that was covered in more detail the last time around, uh, you should feel free to use the chat box function or raise your virtual hand or your physical hand at the point where we're taking questions and, um, make sure that we learn of your question or your issues. But, um, for the sake of coherence, we thought it would be better to sort of break up the zoning districts into two separate meetings. So I'm gonna proceed with the idea of talking about, um, the, uh, the residential districts. But if, um, if people are concerned about other topics, we can hopefully catch that, catch up with that, uh, later on in the meeting. So here we go, uh, we're gonna talk about residential. Okay. The first thing that we want to talk about here, which is a fairly unique, um, feature of the existing Warren regulations, is that there is, um, the regulations aim to slow the rate of development, um, in Warren, not ultimately the pattern or the density of development. So the key, uh, issue there is that, um, through a regulatory mechanism, um, using a sliding scale, the larger the proposed subdivision, the more, the more, um, the, the lower the density, density was gonna be. So, um, this sliding scale kind of, um, if you like, built in the subsequent possibility of further subdivisions, but the initial first cut was always gonna be, uh, less dense. So to explain that, um, so, so the purpose, and the purpose being just to simply slow down the rate of change. We think that this dates from the 1980s and 1990s, when I think maybe the community had a concern that large scale developers were going to actually try and implement large scale subdivisions, um, and risk, um, changing the character of Warren dramatically in a very short period of time. And so that's why this mechanism was probably developed. But it has consequences, which Brandy's now gonna explain to you.
So the, the sliding scale sets up three different potential densities of houses. So how many acres of land you need per house or per residential, um, lot that you might create through a subdivision. Um, and it depends on the size of the subdivision. So there is a, a standard if you're creating a two lot subdivision, which is basically you're dividing one piece of, of land into two. Um, and then there's one if you're doing a four lot subdivision and then one for a 20 lot or more subdivision. Um, and so you're two and then, uh, you know, in between those. So if you look at, say, the 12 acre example here on the chart, this, this sort of becomes clear. So if you were to start with a beautifully flat and unencumbered 12 acres in Warren, of which we know there aren't incredible numbers of, but, um, imagine a, a nice 12 acre, uh, flat rectangle and you're, you had an owner who came forward and said, I want to do a subdivision and I wanna subdivide it all, um, and we're gonna get four, we're gonna take this 12 acres and we're gonna divide it into four, um, under the rules, three acres per dwelling unit. That would result in that 12 acres being divided into four lots. But that same owner could have gotten 12 lots out of that land if they came in and did them, what, essentially one at a time.
Sequential.
Sequentially.
So imagine, imagine every, every, well, we had, heard of the examples, not on Warren, but in other towns where literally it was one a week. Um, and there's no, nothing in the existing Warren regulations that would prevent that. But it's probably more realistic to imagine that there'd be two a year or something such as that.
Right. And, and that's essentially what has happened in Warren, is that most of your subdivisions are creating one or two, uh, new lots at a time. Um, there's only been a couple of subdivisions that, uh, in memory, um, that triggered the four lot, um, level of, of this, um, sliding scale. And, uh, we don't think there's been any 20, um, lot subdivisions, um, that triggered that piece of this, this puzzle. But there's just been a lot of incremental subdivision of, uh, of lots. Um, generally they're not an acre, they're usually a little bit more than an acre because of the need to get water and a septic system on them. And in Warren, that typically requires more than one acre of, of land. Um, but, um, that, that's really what the sliding scale has been doing. Um, I think a lot of people are under the impression that the, the basic lot, you know, the basic zoning in much of Warren, the rural residential district, which is a large percentage of the, the area, is one acre. Uh, but there really is this built in subdivision piece that goes along with it so that, um, someone couldn't come in with, you know, their 120 acres and, and try to subdivide that into, you know, 120 lots. That's not possible to do all at once, but incrementally theoretically over time, it's, it's, it's possible to get there. So you can see that this, this subdivision practice, um, a little bit in the existing development pattern in the rural residential district now. So that's 13,000 acres, as I said, a lot of, of the town. Um, there's 900 homes in that, uh, current zoning district. Um, 200 of those are, uh, on a parcel that's an acre or less, um, in size. So, and 700, um, of those parcels are five acres or less in size, um, which puts the, the median right around three, which again speaks to the idea that you generally need more than an acre to, in, in the Warren context to get, you know, house, driveway, well, septic system. Um, and, um, a lot of people also in the Warren context are looking for a, a rural house site that, that has some land that goes with it. There is some higher density, um, portions of this district, like up on the mountain. Um, I, we did not include Alpine Village in this analysis, even though it is part of this current zoning area, but, um, there's 730 very tiny quarter acre or smaller sized parcels in Alpine Village. It's a, really takes your, your math and, uh, runs it in an entirely different direction if you include those.
Okay. So what we did when we analyzed the residential districts was that we identified possible as existing smaller house lots in the rural areas of town. Uh, what sometimes might be referred to as hamlets or even something slightly less obvious than a hamlet, uh, like a very small cluster, something like, um, major intersection of two roads or something such as that. Areas closer to the village or the resort that are suitable for additional housing, which we count some off, but not a great deal. And then, um, the key use obviously in, um, that we were looking for was where primarily residential uses are allowed and we looked at the town as a whole from that standpoint. Um, there are very few, uh, changes in dimensional standards. Uh, the one acre minimum parcel size remains, um, the same. And then, um, building envelopes and conservation subdivisions are not required in the residential districts.
And so, so essentially what we're doing here is taking what was rural residential and splitting it in two, as shown on that first slide that we had up, that was sort of a summary of the zoning district changes. So that shows up on this map, um, this residential areas, these are these pale yellow, um, areas. Um, and then the rural is the brighter green, um, areas. So in looking at the, um, in looking at the residential, the proposed residential district, um, that pulls out about 3,000, remember the rural residential was, is 13, so this is a smaller piece of that 3,000 acres, about 320 homes, um, in there. Um, 30 parcels that are more than five acres in size. This, um, actually does include a lot of the smaller, um, house lots, including all of those really tiny parcels in Alpine Village. Um, if you take Alpine Village out of the, the math of it, um, you actually find that the median, um, parcel size, um, in this district is right around, um, two acres, again speaking to the idea of sort of what is the smallest, so minimum buildable lot, feasible, um, in Warren, which isn't necessarily driven entirely by the zoning, but also by those other, um, infrastructure, um, needs in terms of, of amount of land required. So the other district, the rural, um, district, this one, um, is the bright green, as I said on the map. So this allows for residential use, but also it includes, um, some opportunities for what you might think of sort of traditional rural businesses and agritourism uses. Um, and there is a change here in the dimensional standards. So this, um, goes to a minimum lot size of five acres, um, and, and adds a lot coverage of standard. And then it comes in with also requiring for, um, subdivisions going forward, building envelopes and if it's a larger subdivision, a conservation subdivision, which is, um, a method of clustering the homes and, and on the least, um, the most, the most suitable portion of the property for development and protecting natural resources, whether that's, um, lands like the metal lands that have been protected, um, through an overlay district in the past in, um, Warren or its steep slopes or, um, habitat areas. Um, those are all potential, uh, elements that we looked at in determining where to build and what land to, to set aside within a conservation subdivision. So in this rural district, so this is the other, this is the larger piece, obviously, when we split apart the rural and residential. Um, this is 8,000 acres, about 500 homes in this area. There's 80 parcels in here now that are an acre or less and about 300 that are five acres or less. Um, but the median size is actually functionally five acres at this point. Um, the average is even higher because there are still some very large pieces, um, remaining in here, uh, some agricultural and also primarily agricultural pieces, a little bit of forest land perhaps as well. But, um, so that, that, um, gives you a picture of what's here on the ground now. And then the, um, conservation?
Yes. So, so that leaves the conservation districts. Um, this is a significant, um, expansion and it takes in both, um, a portion of public land, uh, or, or conserve privately conserved lands, uh, held by land trusts and so forth. It includes the federal lands used by Sugar Bush, um, which are now, uh, their own record, uh, their own zoning district, the forest recreation district, the, um, mint green, uh, area in the top left-hand corner of your map there. Um, and, uh, there's little change in dimensional standards for this, uh, district. There's, uh, added resource-based uses like firewood processing or outdoor recreation. And, um, the innovation here is that building envelopes and conservation subdivisions are required.
So this is also a, a significant, um, amount of, of land in Warren. It's 13,000 acres of which 8,000, um, are public or conserved lands, um, at this point. So a significant portion of this land is basically going to remain in an undeveloped and much of its forest land. There's some, uh, there's some conserved agricultural pieces in there, but a lot of it's obviously forest, um, going forward. Uh, one of the reasons for adding in more of those conserved parcels into the conservation district is really to make the map better reflect that idea of where is suitable and, so we understand both from a development standpoint and from a conservation standpoint. So, um, it helps to, to frame out what lands, um, are actually not available and not going to be, um, developed. So there's about 60 homes in that, uh, in those areas that are, um, dark green, uh, today. So there's about sixty homes in that uh in those areas that are um dark green uh today. Um about seventy parcels that are twenty-five acres or less, um the median parcel size eighteen acres. And the average ninety-eight, so there's some very large pieces in there that run the average um up. So that is basically our walkthrough of the rural residential and the conservation. Zoning districts and what we're gonna do now is we'll stop um screen sharing and we will. Enter into looking at comments and questions. Um you might need to give us a moment to to actually start um looking. Um through these and seeing what we have. Get these up here, um we are gonna try to um.
So I'm 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 reading a message from Bill McClay. Um and Bill asks uh if um he has a specific property question that he'd like to ask. Um and uh doesn't think it's that easy to do in chat, which I understand. Um so he'd like to be able to do it um verbally. If we've got any other questions, we'll come back to you, Bill, I believe. We've got one other sort of conceptual question from um Jito Coleman, which we'll answer and then we'll come back to you if that's okay. So um I'm gonna read out the question from Jito and it's where did the concept of slowing the rate of development. Instead of the extent of development. I don't see that concept reference in the town plan, um. Jito, it's supposition on our part as to what the source of the origin, you know, the existing subdivision regulations. Is attempting to achieve, but the sliding scale um for density. And the workaround, which means that you can get a higher density just by making multiple applications, leads us to the conclusion that the. Concern that those regulations were responding to was the rate of change, not ultimately the amount of change. And so um the town plan does lay out a a model, if you like, for future. For for Warren's development in the future and that includes the protection of the and and um. Support of the village and the uh continued protection and enhancement of conservation resources. And um controlled and well-thought-out continued growth and development in the resort district. So if that's the two chat function questions, Bill, if we. If you could um unmute yourself and pose your question, we will try and answer it for you now and I should. Uh let you know that if it is complicated, um we may well take down the question and then. Try and figure out what the answer is and let you know, but via email in the next couple of days.
Thank you, um thank you for your clear presentation and the work you've done and particularly the planning commission, I think it's all in a great. Great direction, um I have a property that is is being changed from the. I don't, it was the old one or R two rural residential still, or is it the iterations in between, in any event. It um what I'm asking is that it be taken out of the conservation zone and be put in. Um the rural zone, the reason I suggest that is um. This isn't along the ridge of either sides of the valley. Um and it went through a PRD process in the late um nineteen nineties. Um as a PRD with significant restrictions, it is mostly rolling terrain, it's not steep. It is pasture land and former farmland. Um part of it, my wife and I donated the development rights to the land trust. Which is wooded and is appropriate in the conservation zone, but the main part of it, um. What has happened historically was originally the the um forest reserve zone. Was at eighteen fifty feet, I believe, and then it got moved to eighteen thirty. Um I wasn't um you know paying attention and that put my house that existed. Into um the forest reserve and a month or two ago Ruth can tell you that um. There was a review of a property next to my house that um was is in the. Now in the lower down um forest reserve zone. So what's happening is our property is becoming more of a pre-existing non-conforming use. In fact, there are about around, I don't know, eight or nine different lots. It was the two were non-conforming as a result of this proposed zoning change. All of those lots are now gonna become non-conforming, so that means in terms of building height. It means in terms of outbuildings, I believe, I mean you can tell me better than I can, but. Um it it means major restrictions on um of on our property. Um and I don't think when you were describing the rural zone of sort of clustered residential neighborhoods, I mean. We are the PRD, um the lot sizes are five acres, which is more traditional for the. Um rural zone from your presentation. Um you know, the the in the conservation zone, our lots don't even allow. I mean, they'll be pre-existing non-conforming because the lot sizes aren't big enough, it won't meet any of the setbacks. Um we've also protected trees so that it's not seen, this property, even the intent of the conservation zone. Or at least the old um forest reserve, I believe, was to um not have house visibles on ridges. We're on relatively flat plan, hardly anybody can see the houses anywhere in town for from where where we are. From off-site, um and we've conserved meadows, in fact, I was the person on a planning commission many years ago. Proposed the meadowland restriction, so um you know, I I I just don't think it's appropriate. I don't know what the appropriate forum is to discuss that, but I um I strongly. Um request that this looked at be really carefully because I I just don't think it's meeting the intent of what you're.
Bill, can you tell us the address so that we can look at it on the maps um later?
My house is five eighty-three Fuller Farm Road.
Okay, that's good, um I I heard in what you were saying that you had um. A portion of that has its development rights taken off, it may be that the whole property shows up in the conserved land. Uh mapping, so we might wanna go back in and look at that, that was one of the sources of information we used for creating the conservation district. So um we can follow back up with you, but I think we'll wanna look at the map on that and.
Yeah, there is, I mean, there's 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 conserved land, it's forest land along Millbrook.
Yeah, it may be that the whole parcel shows up when in fact you didn't actually conserve the whole parcel.
Right, yeah.
No, there's another meadow, we also conserve the meadowland on the property.
Okay.
Um but then there's individual house sites, which mostly are more wooded, so people don't see other people, but they still get views of the mountains.
We'll 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 have a look at your um details and then we'll we'll propose an answer, I think. I think that you've you've outlined your case really clearly, so that's helpful for us and I think at this point. It yeah, it may have been that we confused it for a. Very lightly developed conserved parcel, just on the basis of the mapping that we had.
The other question I have is um was litigation years ago in Warren about what is the effective date that the new zoning regulations. Come in on, whether it's the planning commission version or the select board version, is you know, I mean, if we wanna try and submit. Before beforehand.
We can answer that for you, so it the the effective date is the adoption date by the select board.
Well, actually, twenty-one days after the adoption.
Yes, and the and the adoption date is, it comes into effect twenty-one days after, there is this weird interval. Where once the new regulations have been.
Warned for a hearing by the select board, they actually go into effect. So that both the current and the proposed regulations are in effect during the period of.
Right.
Which the select board is holding its hearings and leading up to voting on it. Um it's a really bad time to be the zoning administrator.
Right.
Um so they try to keep that window as short as possible.
Because it's inhumane, uh so so.
Yeah, and actually, there was a, there was um twelve hundred units proposed when the zoning was changed back in. The early eighties, I believe, when I was on the planning commission. Um and it was litigated, it was litigated quite extensively, I I don't actually remember what the outcome was, but it sounds like the outcome is. Even more strange than I could imagine.
Right, right, so so the state statute calls for um twenty-one days after the date of adoption, they're going to affect, but. From the first select board hearing till the date of adoption, uh you're basically running two books. The old regulations and the new regulations, so any application would have.
Which one?
No, you have to meet both.
You have to meet both, which is.
Oh, so you get doubly punished, so then the effective date, effective date is the planning, when the planning commission moves it on.
No, if when the select board warns their hearing.
Right.
But there's sort of like this forgiveness clause, if you're denied during that period, you're just reconsidered after the final decision is made, it really. I in the in the case of a significant revision to zoning, it's kind of a freeze. Um it's very difficult to get anything through the system during that period of time.
So once the planning, the select board's hearing, then it goes into this nebulous zone.
Yes.
Yes.
So I should apply if things, I mean, I should apply for at least something before that.
You will leave the your strategy up to you, though.
Yeah, we're not gonna advise you on strategy right now, but yeah, um.
We do have a couple of other um folks have have put some comments into the chat box, um. And then I think maybe we've got one here from Austin wondering um about the rate of growth. And why um the town would want to slow growth even more, um. The, you know, clearly the uh rate of growth has been slow in uh recent years. Obviously, the last year has been a little bit different in the real estate market than uh years in the previous, but. Um the overall trend has not been, obviously, for massive uh development and subdivision in Warren um for many, many years. Um and I don't think the anticipation is that this change to the regulations would. Significantly influence that rate one way or the other, um. It does open up the possibility for potentially more denser housing at the resort, which we talked about at the last meeting. Um and in the village and, you know, in the rural setting, it's kind of a maintain the existing pattern. Um approach, so. So that's.
Yeah, I I I I would just wanna underscore how we don't see. Um the emergence of large-scale developers or rapid development. Um in the in the near future, um and moreover. The proposed regulations that the planning commission have developed uh with our support. Uh lay down clear guidelines for the type of development. And so rather than controlling the pace, we're really trying to control the outcome, if you like.
Um and we are trying to, we've gotten quite a few comments in, so we are trying to to get. Through these and um. Pick the ones that we can sort of give us more quick and specific response to and then um come back. Around to some of these others, um. Beth, um Bins, you had two comments, uh one is related to asking about the conservation districts. Um and whether they are um elevation-based and why they're not reflecting wildlife corridors. Um as mapped by the Conservation Commission, um the existing forest reserve district. In Warren is in many places uh elevation-based. The conservation district that's proposed is actually no longer elevation-based. Um it it does uh for the most part follow property boundaries, it takes in. It does split some very large parcels that um go up the sides of the mountains, it does tend to be more of the higher elevation. Land, um because a lot of that is the public um forest lands or is really constrained. From a development um perspective by slope and and features like that. Um but it is not directly elevation-based any longer. And the planning commission um definitely did uh consider and look at the. Wildlife corridor mapping that um the Conservation Commission has engaged in. Um the conservation, the expanded conservation zoning district does encompass some of those corridors, not. Perhaps all of them, um but has certainly captured some of them. Um and the, I know the Conservation Commission has also come to speak directly to the planning commission. And I think that conversation remains ongoing with regards to um. The wildlife um corridor aspects and um in getting um. Discussing the boundaries of the the zoning districts, particularly the conservation zoning district. So, um and um you've noted, you've noted that you sent in comments and asked about. Um how those are gonna be responded to and and Jito actually had the same um question. Um what we have been doing and will be continuing to do um is collect um. Comments and compile them in a document that the planning commission is going to be reviewing. Um that's been going on since basically late last fall, uh towards towards the end of the year. Um and we'll be putting in as people submit um comments um via the website. Which is one way to send comments to the planning commission uh after this meeting, um and at these meetings. Um those are all um getting uh put in and uh will be reviewed and discussed. Um by the planning commission at their upcoming uh meetings um over the next month, month and a half. Um to be working on responses to those questions and making decisions, as Jim said, about final. Uh or another round of changes to the draft um at that point.
Okay, and so Austin asks, what will this do to property values and are you planning to reassess property this will affect? And so I'm gonna take the second part of that question first. The relationship between the work of the planning commission and the work of the listers and the assessor is it. This in this instance is quite separate, so there's been no decision about these regulations. That are directly related to the need for a town-wide assess reassessment or. A reassessment of part of the town of Warren, the decision usually to the that the town goes through. To um undertake an assess a reassessment, first of all, I should say, it's quite expensive and it's a. Very um large-scale decision on the part of the select board, and generally what it's um triggered by. Is a discrepancy between the um and the price, the. The prices that property are selling for relative to the assessed value that's um calculated by the state. So in other words, as the assessed value becomes the 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 assessed values. Become um greater indifference than uh over time with the actual sale price. You reach a certain point um when the state requires you to undertake a a town-wide assessment. And the reason there is um driven off education taxes, uh because that's a major funding source for education taxes, so. Uh this first part of that question is um what will this do for property values, there is no direct relationship. Necessarily. Between the kinds of zoning changes that are being recommended here and any kind of um. Readily understood outcome for assessment of um property. So there could be some properties that become more valuable and some properties that become slightly less valuable. Overall, um, there is no, expected to be no significant effect as a consequence of, of the proposed regulations.
Yeah, I mean, what um, what you tend to see in Vermont is that land is very much assessed at. How it is currently used. Um, to the extent that the zoning is considered by the listers when they are looking at. At property value, that happens to some extent in areas that are more commercial or industrial. It tends to not um be that common for the listeners to, to consider. Development potential when they're looking at rural land or residential land to the same extent. They're really looking at how it's currently. Used as the primary factor in setting the assessments. Now, you know, there is variability and the listeners have a. Fair range of autonomy from town to town, um, but that, that tends to be typical.
Right.
So, so we've got to look back here, um. We had a question um back up here and then a follow up um as well. From um Jennifer regarding um non-conforming lots in the rural districts, so. Um, just as there are now um in town lots that are pre-existing. Uh, zoning or pre-existing a change in zoning, they are now under the lot size for that district. Um, that would be the case going forward. Um, in the rural zoning. There will be some lots that um were created in there that are under five acres. So somewhere between one and five acres that um will be what we would call pre-existing. Non-conforming lots if the zoning was to go to a five acre minimum um lot size. The setbacks in the rural district will probably not pose a significant problem for those properties. Because they're fairly similar to the setbacks that are in place now in the rural residential district, and if a lot was created under those rules. Um, the setbacks um should be fine. Uh, the lot um coverage standard is new. Um, and that um may limit how much um additional building. Could be added to a pre-existing small lot. Um, so Jennifer asked about, you know, adding a garage or. Such, I think factors would come into play, you know, if you have a very long driveway or an existing large structure already have an outbuilding. You may find that the lot coverage um on a pre-existing lot in the rural district may be. Uh, consumed by what already exists there. Um, if, you know, if you had. Um, a small footprint home or you're relatively close to the road, it didn't have much of a driveway, you would probably be able. To um add um on more and stay within that lot coverage uh number. The lot coverage number. Um, is how much of the land in the parcel can be covered by a buil- impervious surface, a building. A driveway, um.
Out, outs, you know, s- accessory structures and so forth, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, we have a question from Chris Ben who wants to know if he can ask the question in person. So I think that's Camilla's. Chris, so, yep, um, you can, go ahead. Yeah, if you unmute.
Thank you, um. I'm trying to write these questions for these comments down, uh. But primarily, I'm concerned with the, the change in lot size and so forth. There are many regulations we have to follow. Uh, I'm a member of the DRB, many regulations we have to. Look at uh to determine whether proper use of land and so forth. Um, by just arbitrarily changing zones. Uh, and, and assigning a certain size that can be allowed on any given zone. We're not really taking into account the finer points of what that land can actually carry. Uh, and I find that there could be pieces of land that are very. Suitable for increased density that aren't allowed and vice versa. So, I, I'm much more in favor of allowing the regulations of steep slopes, wetlands. Conservation areas and all the other things we have to review dictate what can and can't be done. On a piece of land, rather than just saying arbitrarily, nope, has to be five acres here. Uh, so that, that's, that's my primary comment, and that kind of piggybacks on top of what Bill was saying where. You know, his land can, is suitable for some types of development, but just because arbitrarily. It was decided that that area needed to be in a certain zone, it doesn't take into account the ability for that. So, uh, that, that's my primary comment. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, um, thanks, Chris. Uh, just a couple of quick points, um. The, the setting of the minimum parcel sizes by district. Um, is not so much arbitrary, but is based on the character and the, as, as. The, the character of the, of the neighborhood, if you like, or the, or the area that we're, we're, we're studying or looking at, and then. Um, the, the, that pattern of use. And whether or not the community is looking to really dramatically change that character. So, for the most part in Warren. It's an effort to preserve and maintain the existing character rather than, than change it. And then, s- so it. So there's that issue, and then, and then the other question is, uh, or the other issue is, is that it's, it's uh density based in terms of. Um, the ultimate um level of, you know, the old setting the lo- parcel size level. Um, and then all those, I, you know, uh, uh, attributes that you identified. Uh, come into the question, equation when it comes time to figure out the density of development on a particular parcel. So if it's. Got lots of wetlands or steep slopes or some other set of natural features, that's actually gonna push the density down. If it's some kind of idealistic, uh, you know, rectangle that's serviced on two sides by. Good roads and doesn't have any natural resource constraints, then that's gonna get the highest density development that. That that district would allow for, I guess, is the easiest way of describing that. But your points are well taken and, um, thank you.
We also have a comment from, you know, and I think this is. This is similar to comments that have come from the Conservation Commission, um, looking at the lands north of the dump road. Um, um, as to why those are in, proposed to be in the residential um district. Rather than the rural district. Um, the planning commission has looked at that area. And I think had some discussion of that. Um, the proximity to the village. Um, continues to be, um, sort of the driving decision maker in that land, but I, I. Do know that, um, do know that the, the concerns that um have, have been heard. Um, and, and are still on the list of things the planning commission is um looking at. I'm just seeing if we've got anything that we haven't.
Addressed.
Hit. Do you see anything further that we, I think we've kind of hit the major.
The major things, actually. Um, was any, yeah, I think, I think we've covered most of the questions that have, that have been asked here.
Uh, one, uh, we just got an additional comment in, um, asking about clustering. And uh, in fact, that yes, would be allowed and in fact required for larger subdivisions. Um, in the rural area. So, in that case, homes could be clustered onto smaller lots. Uh, with open space, um, and, and that actually is desirable. Um, and encouraged uh slash required for certain types of subdivisions.
Right. In fact, you know, in the rural and conservation districts, it would be the preferred process for subdivision. Okay, I think, um, Mike Ketchell, who's on the planning commission, has reminded folks that the best place to submit a comment. Was um to go to the website, um, and the address just. Got scrolled away from me, um.
We had a new message.
So, um, if you Google planning dot Warren VT dot org. Um, backslash contact backslash, uh, you'll get to, um, the planning commission's. Um, language regulation page, and then you can uh use the, um. Web page to type in your comments or your questions and uh they're captured for us as well and passed on to us. So, if you prefer that mode to asking a question on the Zoom chat box, go ahead, that would be great. And then, uh, maybe at the end of the meeting, we'll get a Jim or Mike to uh repeat the website address.
Okay. So, uh, we've also had a um question about. Uh affordability. I assume this is talking about housing affordability. Um, you know, zoning. Doesn't have a lot of tools, uh, include a lot of tools to address uh the cost of housing. The town has done what it can through zoning. Um, there certainly are. Um, districts, the village and the resort areas where infrastructure exists to support it that allow for. Higher density housing, um, which is of course the most likely uh way to get to. More affordable housing is, is to have higher densities. Um, multi-unit housing is allowed. Um, in all of the zoning districts, so that is actually a change to be more open about the forms of housing. Um, and the town is also fairly um generous and flexible around accessory. Um, dwellings and apartments so that uh a homeowner can add a second dwelling unit to their property. Um, so those elements um are, are hopefully will address um. Affordability to the, the best that zoning can. Um, obviously, the things that are driving the cost of housing in Vermont. Are not directly a result of, of zoning at the municipal level, or really much bigger, um. And broader issues. So, we also have. The act, Act one seventy one question. So Judo is asking about. Um, whether the revised regulations um fully implement. Uh, the town plan um goals related um to uh. Act one seventy one, which is the forest fragmentation related language um in. Uh, state statute. And um, we think that the expansion of the conservation uh zoning district. And the provision for building envelopes and conservation subdivisions in those rural parts of the town. Um, do uh what the town plan was, was calling for. Um, the building envelope piece um is particularly um important, um, because the, um. That is where you sort of decide where on the piece of property the house is going to be located, when a, a lot is created. Uh, for a new house, um, but I be, and consideration is given to the natural resource. Um, characteristics of the property at that point. So that's when um, that will be looked at and. Um, that can work on the goals to try to maintain. Um, habitat corridors and habitat areas and minimize forest fragmentation. Um, the development review board would have the authority to um put conditions. On lots that are being created um using this mechanism so that the, there couldn't be clearing. Beyond the development envelope area um that was created, um, and, um. So those, those, those are the tools that exist in the zoning um to address the forest fragmentation.
The principles of Act one seventy one and with regard to forest fragmentation, so thank you, Judo. So we just received another question from Austin with regard to the number of parcels that are currently under five acres. And will be made undevelopable. Um, I'm assuming that you mean in the uh rural. District, um, I, do you have?
I don't have the numbers at hand. The planning commission has requested an analysis and we have given them some numbers. We, um. I don't necessarily have them right here. Um, and then the question is really. Um, what is developable versus undevelopable? So, a pre-existing lot. Even if it's under the minimum lot size can be developed. The real question comes into whether land can be further subdivided. So in the rural district, as the um language is drafted right now and the proposed language. You would need ten acres before you could subdivide a lot, so you could have two, five acres, lots, um, so. This, um. This would, um, you know, affect the, you know, this change does affect the properties that are in that um range. Of, you know, probably from a couple of acres in size up to ten acres where, you know. Conceivably in the past, they may have been able to be subdivided and now under the zoning would not, but we don't have an actual. Um, hard number on, on that at hand right now, but it is something that the planning commission has already gotten some. Um, analysis and will probably be doing more as we go ahead, given the questions that we've gotten around this question. On the issue.
So, um, another question comes from Devon. Um, why are you proposing a regulation on materials in the rural zone? And they cite uh section twenty one oh five E three C. Proposed buildings that are compatible in scale, form, massing and materials with traditional Vermont binocular buildings typically found on farmsteads in the region. And then they go on to say, this kind of regulation seems aimed at design and is certainly incompatible with our history of creativity. Furthermore, how is the D O B to rule in this regulation with so much gray area? Um, I'm assuming that that language is. Um, specific to one of the districts that we discussed tonight, not all of the districts.
Yes, yes, it's in the rural district, but I think it's a carryover.
And I think it's actually.
From what language you've gotten.
I think it actually might be a word for word chucked out from your existing regulations. Um, so, uh, we're happy to discuss that. With the planning commission moving forward, um. I, I would say that it is, um. Typical kind of design language for uh communities in Vermont without having strict design. Guidelines or uh requirements, and uh I think it's intended. To be applied very broadly. So, um, Brandy's just fishing through and seeing if it's in the existing regulations.
Yes.
Um, which we think it is, but if there was a strong movement to actually. Uh, reframe that language or with, with remove it, then I think that's a discussion that would be appropriate to have at the. Planning commission subsequent. planning commission subsequent um to tonight's meeting.
It's not coming to my fingertips instantly, but um there are is some similar verbiage in the second part of your question in the uh village districts as well that was carried through that um exists in the um current language. And then um we can definitely look into that and get back to it. And then I have a note that uh Ginny Roth would like to speak. Go ahead.
The, yeah, I'm not. So Virginia, you're moving your hand across the face of your phone there. We're not sure whether you're trying to.
She's trying to unmute.
Unmute? This is pretty exciting.
I think, I think, no, did we lose Virginia? Are you?
Are you able to, are you able to speak, Virginia? Virginia, can you hear us?
No.
Hi, you you you're you're on. You can ask your question now.
Uh no, I I'm sorry. Just continue. I I will place my question later.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. I don't believe we've got anything substantively new. Um so with that in mind, I would ask that um Mike Ketchell explained to everybody the best way to access the website. So that if you have got a question or you wake up at three o'clock in the morning and you finally realize what you wanted to ask, um you can log on and do it anytime you like. And then we'll get that question and it'll be put before the planning commission at the next meeting. Mike, you wanna do that?
Yeah, I just I just sent uh the link to everybody again and definitely, anything that you're concerned about or questioning and wanna wanna want an answer to, the best you can do is to submit it to that contact form. It all gets catalogued. We'll be submitting answers to all of those and um engaging in further discussion if particular properties need additional questions.
I I should say that if you've got just a general observation or comment that you wanna make about the process or the product in general, then you should feel free to to make that in the comments on the website as well.
Absolutely. We get, we've gotten several comments that are just like, awesome, you guys, thank you so much. And other ones that are like, oh, my God, what are you doing? The whole range is in there.
Great.
Great, thank you.
I'm gonna pop the shared screen back up just briefly to go through um put this up so people can see it on their screens as well. Um we've we've talked through this already um this evening. Um but in terms of schedule, um the planning commission hopes to have a revised draft um at the end of the summer, ready to start the public hearing process. Um and as we mentioned before, both the planning commission and the select board will need to have formal public hearings on a revised um set of regulations prior to their adoption. So this is really the beginning point um of opportunities for public feedback. But we encourage everyone to comment earlier rather than later. Um it's it's much better to respond, to get their comments in and get them reviewed and responded now while the um planning commission is considering um all of these matters and is 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 putting the time in to to look at each um each piece. Each piece that comes by. So um unless anyone had anything further, they wanted to make sure they got to us tonight, I think.
Oh, there's one last question from Karen. How can we access the recording? Um I believe that the access to the recordings is gonna be through the webpage that uh Mike gave you the um address for.
And Mad River Television is recording this as well. So I think you'll find it in there um with things. And also they recorded the meeting that we had um two weeks ago or so as well. So that, um, yes, Mike?
I will post the links to it on planning dot Warren V T dot org. But they are also cataloged at the M R V T V dot com website.
Great.
On their archives.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, Jim, did you have anything final you wanted to to leave us with?
No, just please, please feel free to uh to comment on your own property and on the on the on the project as a whole. Uh you know, the planning commission is here for you, you know. So uh if you have comments about it, please let us know what the what those are. We can't, we can't possibly address your concerns if we don't know what they are. So write, so write in, uh talk to members of the planning commission, come to the meetings. Um you know, make your voice heard, please. That's why we're here. Thank you in advance.
Thank you. So with that, I think I'll say good evening and uh we'll sign off and end the meeting.
So long, everyone. Thank you.